Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I think we are at our last presentation, and I think this might be a record. Our last presentation is an affordable housing deep dive. I see Mr. Johnson here with us.
Greetings, councilmembers. Mayor, Mayor Protem. I am Reginald Johnson, Director of the Department of Community Development. And my task before you this afternoon is to talk about income and affordability. And I'm glad to be able to share some information with you as you move forward with your deep dive. The information that we'll share is important information, I think, because if you're, you know, like me, a lot of times I move around the community, members ask me, well, what is affordable housing? And so one of the things you'll know, and I'm sure you get that question as well. One of the things we'll talk about is, in fact, what is affordable housing here in the city of Durham? So housing affordability versus affordable housing. So in terms of housing affordability, and same words, but when you reverse them, they have two different meanings. Housing affordability is basically the rule of thumb that households, households should not spend more than 30% of their gross income on housing-related expenses. This is defined as rent plus utilities or mortgage insurance and taxes. So as an example, a household with an annual income of $40,000, the affordable housing expenditure per month is $1,000 per month. That's what we talk about in terms of affordable, housing affordability. In terms of affordable housing, affordable housing refers to safe, decent housing that is affordable based upon the rule of thumb that we just talked about to low-income households. So who is low-income? The city follows the income limits for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the Home Investment Partnership Program, which defines low-income as households earning less than 80% of the area median income. You might hear that, have heard that before in terms of AMI. AMI limits are based upon HUD's estimates of median family income using data from the U.S. Census Bureau, adjusted for household size. And AMI limits are set for geographical areas defined by the Census Bureau and HUD. And for the purpose of setting limits for the city of Durham is part of the Durham-Chapel Hill Metro Fair Market Rent Area that includes Durham and Orange Counties. So I'm going to spend a little time on this chart, and you can kind of look at it. When I present this status with residents, you know, I try to have them to, they know with their household income and kind of visualize where they may fit or not fit in terms of this AMI. So down across the top, we have the household income as percentage of AMI, 30, 50, 60, and 80. And then, as I just mentioned, is household size that is the driver. So based upon the household size, what I often go to is the first thing is the four-person. So four-person household at 80% AMI is a household income of $76,400. And one of the things I share is that, we share is that that's not an individual's income. That's not the breadwinner's income, whereas the individual, if it's just one person. But when we're talking about a household, it's not the individual, the breadwinner's income. It's everybody in the household's income. So if my grandmother lives with me and she gets a social security check, we're counting her social security check as part of the household income. So that's what we mean by 70, 80% of area median income from a family of four. You can see how I adjust based upon family size. Low-income housing tax credits max out at, generally max out at 60% AMI. That's one of the reasons that we have this here. When we talk about residents who reside in public housing, often the average, well, the average here in Durham, they're in the teens in terms of the information that I'm sharing here, in terms of household size. So HUD defines a household incomes with below 80% area median income as low income. Households below 50% AMI considered very low income. And households below 30% AMI considered extremely low income. What's important about this is that all of our programs have to be targeted to persons, households, who meet these income limits. So that's whether we are providing services, whether we're providing funding to organizations who the end beneficiary has to meet these income limits. Or whether they are, we're building, supporting households, developments, projects that we just, you know, like we talked about Willard Street just the other night. Everybody in the, all the households that live there have to be, meet these income limits as income beneficiaries. One of the things that's important, that's one of the things that we're monitored on by HUD. When they come in, we have to get income data, and they go back and verify the income data that we have or the agencies that we, that we provide money to come and verify the income limits, that we've not exceeded those. And if we do exceed the income limits, then that can be, pose a problem. Yes, ma'am.
Reginald, could you speak right while you're talking about the continuing qualification for our residents that actually meet these criteria? How often do they have to recertify eligibility when we are serving them?
Good question, Madam Manager. That's annually. So one of the things that we do is that we go out and we're charged with going out to particular places that we receive funding, and the expectation is those entities have certified annually every year of the person's income, household income. One of the things that I would also share with the numbers that we're sharing here, these are absolute. And when I use the term absolute, meaning if we go a dollar over, they can be unforgiving. And so that's the other point. We've had conversations with previous councils where citizens have said, well, you know, I'm a dollar over, I'm less than a dollar over. If it documented that you're over, one is over and you're not eligible. And that's what we're charged for. And when we do that, then we have a challenge here on the Community Development Department. I'm sorry, I did something to move my, nevermind. So one of the things, those things who, you know, in conversations that I have, persons, residents also talk about the limits and, you know, how they've changed for Durham. And this chart, the purpose of this chart is to show how the percentage change of AMI for a four-person household has changed since 2010. You can see how the limit has gone, has gone up and increased. And you can see, of course, during COVID-2021, it did go down, and they do go down occasionally. But most times, you can see that they go up and have had, I would say, fairly pronounced increases recently. I mean, when you're talking about 11%, but that's also in 2018, it was a 10. And then we graphed this so you can see it visually. The rationale for the current income limits that we have, like I said, the city is required to use the HUD AMI limits for activities funded with HUD entitlement programs and projects using federal low-income housing tax credits. The home AMI limits are the standard across the country for affordable housing programs, which allows comparisons across jurisdictions. So it's not the same as it would be in Dallas for us. Dallas has their own AMI, as an example, or Charlotte or any other jurisdiction. But it's still 80% of that AMI, or 60%, or 50%, or 30%. Income limits are updated annually by HUD and do not require additional data or collection or analysis by us. So we receive, usually I think it's in June, we receive the updated numbers that we're used, to use for that point going forward. The concerns with the current income limits, that's with everything that there is, you know, positives and negatives, ups and downs. Durham is part of the metro FMR area that includes Orange County, which tends to have higher income than, on average, than Durham, which means that the median income for Durham and Orange together is higher than it would be for Durham alone. HUD calculates the AMI limits based on family income, which includes renters as well as owners. Since renters have average incomes, lower, lower incomes than owners, when you combine the AMI limits, are higher than what they would be if they were based on renters' incomes alone. And so the numbers that I share with you, for example, the median family income between 2021 and Durham is $71,400, and Orange County is higher at $80,294. Now, of course, you know, there's a population differential, and when the HUD and the Census Bureau looks at this, it is weighted. So it's not, you know, we're treated equally, but it is weighted because we are larger in terms of getting to the final number. And then the, in terms of the median income by housing tenure, you can see the number of households that average, and then where owner households have a higher median income than rental households, as I just mentioned. So this is the distribution of renter and owner incomes. So on one axis, we have the percentage, then across the bottom, we have the AMI. And so let's just start right here at the beginning with households less than 30% AMI. Just remember, we saw the numbers earlier, but for households in that category, you can see the number of, the distribution of renters, which is in the yellow, versus the distribution of persons in those household income levels that are on their homes. And then you can see it from 31% to 50% AMI, the distribution is still goes to renters, meaning most renters in those categories, most persons, households in those categories are renting. And then it doesn't get even close to being even until you get to the 81% to 100% of AMI. But you can see where the, it's still at the 80% below where we project, direct, target all our resources, that's still mainly renters in those categories. And then it's when you get to the households that are greater than 100% AMI, you can see that homeownership shoots up in terms of persons above those 100% of AMI, 60%, just above 60% of those own their own homes. So I'll conclude there and then ask if there are any questions. And I hope that I've met the expectation in terms of providing this information to you.
Thank you, Reginald, for that presentation. I'm going to start down with Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your detailed presentation. Can you just kind of, I guess, speak to it again? You talked about if someone goes over the threshold, like just a dollar, then they're not eligible. Can you just speak a little bit more?
Yes, I'd be glad to speak about that. So one of the things that we expect and are charged with is having income eligibility on the front end. So when a person, we provide services to a person, and when I say "we," it's not just the city directly, but most often it's one of the nonprofit organizations who we provide funding to. They have to certify that the person that's receiving the benefit is, has that income. And there's some tools that we use, as well as information that we have to gather to have documentation for that. Then when we enter into IDIS, IDIS is the management system that HUD charges us with, and we need a beneficiary. And beneficiary means the person who's the end beneficiary, not in terms of Reginald Johnson, but just in terms of my data. I have to be able to enter that data, and it's a challenge if, well, it's more than just a challenge. It's not, it's out of compliance, that if it's over, and we have documentation that says that it's over, that we will have to pay that money back. Now, when we're talking about, is it a dollar over? It's not room for, you know, saying, well, you know, it's supposed to be $9,000, well, $10,500, but you have $10,500 and $1. We're not able to, that person is not qualified, does not meet the regulations.
So is that person then maybe referred someplace else, or is it any other services that you wrapped him out?
Yes, they would be referred to someone else, but in terms of us providing our services under that particular program, we're not able to do that at that time. I will share with you, the one thing I did not mention when I made the presentation, we don't make distinctions about what people do for a living in terms of their occupations. A lot of times, you know, when we talk with community members, they're talking about what people do in terms of the different types of jobs. We don't, we just look at income. Now, I will tell you, there have been some situations when we work on homeownership, and usually it happens in homeownerships where a person may be expecting. And so if you notice that the expecting can change the household size depending upon when the baby arises, and we've had circumstances where that, the income has not changed, but the number of people in the household has changed, and that has worked to their benefit. That has happened before.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabeiro. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your presentation. It's always good to get updated data so that we can understand a little bit more about what we're dealing with. I'm wondering if we have updated data on housing cost burden and the number of households that are housing cost burdened and at, and at what levels? To try to get a sense of, like, how many affordable housing units are we short right now?
So I don't have current information on that. That's something that, in the big picture, we would like to achieve. We have some dated information. I think you might have been on council when we initially presented that, I can't remember. But we have not been able to, particularly with COVID in the middle of that, been able to do that information. But we would have to get somebody else to do it. We want to actually have that information for ourselves, but I promise you, it hadn't gotten any better.
Right. I mean, yeah, I'm sure it's gotten worse. I think the, yeah, the last data that we have is from when we were planning for the bond, I think. Yeah, so probably about four years old. And, yeah, just given, you know, given how rents are going up so much all over the city, I'm sure the problem's gotten worse, and it'd be good to, you know, we know that we can't solve the whole problem here at the city, but it'd be good to have a sense of, like, what the, what the current scope is. So whenever y'all are able to update that data, I think it would be helpful for us. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember?
Sorry. Mr. Johnson, this is Karen Lotto, apologies. Karen Lotto, Assistant Director of Community Development. Just wanted to add on, we do have and can provide an estimate of housing cost burden that the Department of Housing and Urban Development prepares of a number of households that are housing cost burdened. The data lags. It's currently from, I think it's 2015, 2019 dataset. That is the most current data available. What we do not have, as Director Johnson was alluding to, is the analysis that was done a number of years ago that tried to align existing housing stock with incomes of people in Durham to really show where exactly the gaps are in the housing stock. And that would require kind of a level of analysis and data analysis that, that we don't have internally at Community Development. But we could provide and can provide after this meeting some basic numbers on numbers and percentages of cost-burdened households.
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, I think the, it's unfortunate that there's so much of a data lag because we know the situation is changing so quickly. It might be helpful to have that data and then have y'all and some of our community partners maybe look at it and give us some, some of their thoughts from the ground about, you know, about how they, about the changes that they've seen in the time period since that data came out, especially if it's pre-COVID. I feel like anything that's pre-COVID is just going to be dramatically different now. So, but yeah, anything that you have would be helpful, and then we can go out to the community for more insights based on the experiences of folks that are, like, working, working with people who are unhoused or precariously housed on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would also share that I didn't share with, you noticed the slide that I showed, displayed with the increasing median incomes. We all know that a lot of that, driving that, is persons who are coming into Durham. That's move, pushing our median income up. It's not necessarily people who are here that are already receiving increased wages that's pushing the median income, and we know that from, from other data as well.
Thank you, Manager Page.
Thank you for the recognition. Assistant Director Karen Lotto mentioned that we actually do receive that information from an outside source and that we have a dated version of it. I'm wondering if she has an idea when the next update to that will be coming out?
Yes, Lotto.
So, yes, ma'am. HUD updates it annually. So this year, they updated it to the 2015, 2019 dataset. Last year, it was 2014, 2018. So they add a year each year, but it lags three years behind. And, and part of that is because census data lags a certain period of time. And then this is, my understanding, a special dataset of the census data that is provided by Census to HUD, and they then do whatever it is they do. So it will get updated next year, but it will still be a three-year lag.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill.
Thank you so much for your detailed presentation this afternoon, and thank you, Councilwoman Caballero, for leading this discussion. I'd just have, ask you to look at the renters versus owners chart for one second. If you could speak a little bit more to that in terms of, I guess, actualizing. For me, it looks like the real way that you see kind of the wealth gap occurring between a renter and an owner. Can you, can you speak a little bit, maybe give a couple of examples, if you can, of what this, what this chart really means?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I can. Again, remember, based upon the information we've shared before, we're talking about household incomes. And we're talking about percentage as a percentage of the median income. So if you go to the lowest, or the 30% or less, what's, what's that saying? Is that we have of the people in that category, 20, just over 20% own their own homes. Okay? Just to be candid with you, that would be a house, typically a person is not buying a house at that level. They have inherited that house or otherwise are occupying that house, but they're not necessarily have financed that themselves. Okay? And just to give another reference point, when we're talking about the less than 30% AMI, for those who are in public housing, the average is in the teens. So it's even half that. Okay? So in terms, when we go up to 31% to 50% AMI, there again, most of the persons in that category are renting, and it's a function of income. That's where you're going back to what Councilmember Johnson, your burden of people paying a greater portion of their income in housing costs are at that, at that level. So, and when you have people spending greater than 30% of their income, and we talked about 30% being the benchmark, when a person is paying, for example, 50% of their income, household income and housing costs, their housing cost burdened. And then one of the challenges, and I know you, you know, have seen information when you talk about even those who are transportation, when you factor in housing and transportation as an example, look at those two together, then if they go to, you know, 70%, definitely above 50% or even higher. And we haven't talked about any medical, we haven't talked about any food, we haven't talked about school supplies, or any range of things. Now, what's popping, still staying on that chart, the important things, and this is a benchmark we talk about in the 51% to 80%. Now, that's a broader category, and just as a reference point, many of us are familiar with Habitat for Humanity and the work that they do. Typically Habitat for Humanity residents are at the 60% AMI level. And we are working with subsidies to be in Habitat for Humanity, is working with households at that level to enable them to get in the house so that they can also maintain it. Because this is the challenge. So usually 60%, when you're talking about homeownership, is generally going to be at the, at the lowest you're going to be able to go because you, in terms of financing, even with a program with Habitat for Humanity. But more importantly, being able to maintain that house. So if your air conditioner goes out, you know, it shouldn't blow your household budget and you're struggling and, you know, oil pumping or pick one of those, you know, system issues is where, what, what that means. And so, but when we get to 80%, usually when you're 60 to 80, that's when it gets, you're more able generally. Now, in particular, this was before where we are now, which is an important distinction, but let's say before COVID. Persons who were 60 and 80 and getting closer to 80 were, are in the able to purchase a house if you had a house available. And that's where, when we had our second mortgage program pre-COVID and going into South Side, we were trying to get persons generally in the 70, 80 range with those houses. Of course, now going to, when you get above 100% AMI, you can see how the ownership level, percentage people shoots up because you can afford to have a house, and the bank will consider you bankable, and you can finance whatever portion that you have. Now, the challenge that we're having, you know, is even with that, you know, 70 to 80, 60 to 80% AMI now, after COVID, and in these times, it's hard, and this is going to be a challenge for persons to be able to buy a house because the prices of houses have escalated. And so can you finance it and still have ratios? And that's the other thing that I mentioned, didn't mention in terms of, you know, when we do our mortgage program, you have back end, what they call back end and front end ratios in terms of percentage that have to go to certain costs, and you have to evaluate that as well as other debt. So I hope, ma'am, that, does that help paint a picture, better picture? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation, making it easy to understand. So as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, like, how can we get more folks to the right? You know? And I think what I'm trying to conclude is how do we effectively do a both end? And that is, how do we build stock, housing stock, to meet folks where they are? But also, how can we help folks move to the right, you know, to make more money? Is there a reason why we don't collect the data around professions or what type of job it is? And the reason why I ask that, in, in education, there were bonuses provided for science and math teachers when they started focusing on STEM after No Child Left Behind. And when they couldn't find science and math teachers, they started doing incentive programs to get them, you know? So if we have, you know, folks that are what I'm going to call shadow industries, they're, they're working in these perpetual industries that aren't paying them a wage that allows them to live, then how can we get creative, you know, as a local government and with community partners to focus on that? And I, and this is about, you know, an all-encompassing approach to helping folks get access to a better quality of life. So is there a reason why we don't collect that data?
So I'm going to answer your question. It's a good question, Councilmember Williams, in two different ways. One, in terms of the housing, and we're focused on housing because our data, our funding is focused on housing. So that we're kind of tied in that way. But there is a way that, that is delivered. So it's not that we don't, for example, we run, have run a second mortgage program and has a long mortgage portfolio. So of course, we know a person's incomes for second, for second mortgage programs that apply to us. I would say, one of the reasons I was saying that we don't make distinctions between what people do is because if I'm a teacher, but I do a lot of mentoring, mentoring, working afternoons, and I get paid for it, it pushes my income up, right? Or, you know, if I'm a police officer and make a lot... Or, you know, if I'm a police officer and make a lot, you know, I'm saying a lot above the limits that we're talking about, because remember, I'm, our funding is focused on household limits. I make above that, then I don't qualify, but it's not about what, what I do for a living, it's about how much money I'm making. One of the things we do with our resources is that we have, you know, have partnerships with doing public schools, helping people, helping students and you, you know, we've approved that. We've also tried to, at different times, do housing counseling to help persons. But what you're talking about is really a change in funding source, different from what we're working with. And a lot of that is with the office of economic and workforce development in terms of jobs and connecting jobs with skills. Now what we've been able to do, for example, is we have a construction program that's going on in community development right now, where people are learning skills and we can use that. But remember, the beneficiary, those students have to be at these income levels to receive that benefit and be in that program. So, so the answer, I wouldn't say that, that, we know incomes of our beneficiaries and know what they do, but just widely, we don't collect information on, on persons professions.
Thank you.
And then another part that I would add, now if you wanted a program that targeted our teachers or targeted our first responders, well, that's a different type of program than what, what I'm talking about in using the funding sources that we're talking about. Does that, does that help any?
Yeah, it, it does, it does, actually. I, I just feel that, I feel like I'm disadvantaged because we have three-year outdated data, which is unfortunate for you all who haven't, who are having to, you know, source this funding. And also, you know, just not being able to really know how we can, you know, where, where our, you know, guardrails where we can be creative and how to help people more. Okay. I may have another question, but I'm going to pass on to someone else who may have comments.
Thank you. Did you have anything? I'm going to let Mayor Protem and then I'll go back to you, Councilmember Holsey Hyman.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hyman. Brother Johnson, thank you so much, good to see you being here. Housing should be a, a human right, but it's not. And I, I associate, Councilmember Johnson has said time and time again that, you know, housing is a commodity, something that can be traded and sell, sold and I, she's right. I associate with that and as long as that's the reality, it, it's subject to market forces. With that said, you know, I've worked with a lot of affordable housing advocates before getting into public life here in Durham, and I was surprised at how many of them lived in five and $600,000 houses. So one day I said to an affordable housing worker, I will never call the name, you know, how'd you get your house? You know, we do a lot of work on trying to build the stock for 30% AMI, but how do we get those people to the right? How, how do we get people at 30% AMI to live where you live, even though you're so passionate about affordable housing? And it was a little nervous laughter and we talked about systemic structures in this country. There's a reason why there's such a fervor when the lottery hits a certain amount and folk are buying tickets and folk, you know, you ever had that conversation, what I would do if I won the lottery? Money makes a difference. And moving forward, in my opinion, having an affordable housing conversation without talking about money in people's pockets and how to get people more money is, is half the conversation. This chart, and I'm glad, Your Honor, Madam Mayor, that you focused on this chart and you too, Councilmember Williams, moving to the right, because it, it tells a story. The more money you have, you do math differently. Life, even if you're not at the level where you're buying homes, the more money you have, which all speaks to education, it speaks to certification, it speaks to exposure, it speaks to opportunity, the more you have, the easier your rent comes until you cross the threshold one day where you're doing math differently, where you're now talking about ownership. This big blue bar and the 100% AMI, and you're right, Reginald, some of this is probably bequeathed and inherited, but we know that some people were in a position to, to give their house to their children because when the government had the GI Bill, they took advantage of it when black people couldn't. So we, we need to talk about some massive kind of equitable programs here at the municipal level. The reason why, you know, I think guaranteed income was so important, and I watched one sister tell the story about how guaranteed income changed her life. She, she, you know, she didn't feel the pressure anymore. That wasn't an increase in stock, that was an increase in income. That was a money issue. You know, so when, you know, when we talk about a Marshall-type reinvestment in our community, that's money. So I appreciate moving to this right, but what this chart shows us is that the more money you have, your options change. So anytime we talk about affordable housing, we need to talk about, there should be no empty seats at Durham Tech for those programs on HVAC, for those, you don't need a degree for those, good salaries. When these companies are coming here, Meta, I hope you're listening, Google, you know, those, you know, you set aside some, some apprenticeships, not just folk from Oxford Manor or McDougal Terrace, you know, getting janitor jobs, but how do we get them to some of those certifications where they're making 90, $95,000, even no degree, but they went through a certification because money matters. So, so in this deep dive and, and I, Madam Mayor, I hope you will not stop being relentless on this. Anytime we have this conversation, our Shared Economic Prosperity Plan, I know folk got sick of me talking about it when I first got in office and, you know, I stayed on you, Reginald, and, and Andre Pettigrew, that's got to be the tip of our spear. How do we participate in this economy? And I look forward to hearing, you know, an update soon on Built to Last. That's part of the housing conversation that we haven't done, and I say we, I mean me included, haven't done a good enough job of giving enough volume to, how do we get our people's income up so you can buy what you want? We, the market forces are always going to be the market forces, but certifications, education, exposure, more money makes a difference. And this chart says it all. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hyman, Caballero, sorry.
Thank you. I think Councilmember Holsey Hyman was next, and then Mayor O'Neil.
Yeah, it's just, it's really just disturbing to me because when you talk about just like the amount that rents are right now, you know, you can't really save a down payment for a house because the rents are so high. Right? And so I have a lot of people that I talk to about this and I was told recently about some programs outside of Durham. I won't call the bank, but the bank is actually trying to work with people to be able to afford to buy houses, but also actually helping them to clean up their credit. Also, I've heard about a bank doing 110% of financing, which I have some issues with because if you're doing 110% of financing, your mortgage is going to be high. But it's just very disturbing that, that you can't get from one level to another level because you're trying to just kind of deal with the, the day-to-day surviving. Right? So you can't save for anything because you're spending so much money, you know, in rent and stuff like that. But do you, can you speak to any of these, maybe some of these programs that I'm hearing in other, I guess, places that where they're doing this 100% financing, where they're kind of working with people's credits to kind of get them to be able to, be able to be eligible to buy? Are we doing anything like that in Durham? I'm just curious.
Well, I would, you know, be glad to receive information on those programs, which we can receive offline, I can look at those. But, you know, going back to what Mayor Protem commented, and that relates to Councilmember Johnson's comments, simply about more money does make a difference. When we talk about, she was asking about the cost burden, simply if I have more money, my cost burden is lessened, my housing cost burden goes down. That, that's, that's what this is saying, that's the data that she's talking, talking about in terms of what we're doing. For example, we're part of our Forever Durham Affordable Housing Plan, does include a partnership with OEWD and the Housing Authority, try to get that off the, get a program like that off the ground. Of course, it's been impacted with COVID, but that's the same thing, is skills, hoping to get persons with better opportunities so that they can move up and make more money in, in different situations and prove. That's the reason we have the, the job training, construction training program in community development now. But in terms of, you know, what banks are, are doing, now of course, banks are for-profit institutions, they're, they do what they do. And, and as Mayor Protem said, you know, those are market forces, so there's an interest there. But, but my point is that, yes, there are ways that I think we can study, but remember, depending upon our funding source, we have to be careful, almost like surgeons. So in many respects, while we are, you know, project managers, we kind of operate like surgeons because we have to be very specific or as you, you know, are approved Monday night, the, the significance can be, have some deep ramifications.
Thank you, Manager Page.
Thank you for the recognition. One of the reasons I wanted to highlight certification, annual certification to, to remain a recipient that's qualified for certain services that we particularly, our funding sources and just us as a government are permitted to provide assistance to, because I felt like we would talk about what we're talking about right now, which is raising the incomes of our residents in, in a big, in a certainly a, a economic empowerment. We need to be raising income of everyone so they can participate in the economy. But for the resident, if their income gets raised above some of the limits that have been established by policy that's not set at this, at this body, they're going, they might lose their home that they're living in. And so that becomes something that needs to be also prominent in this conversation. Even when we're talking about guaranteed, you know, guaranteed income for, for people, there may not be a limit on how much we could give someone, but it certainly might disqualify them for a housing that they can afford to live in, in the community. So it's very complicated and I just want to make sure that we have all of those points as we speak about the different, you know, different, just the different ways that we have to look at and be innovative around the space in order to help our residents transition from what we see on the left of this further over to higher income levels where more choices are available. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor O'Neil.
You know, that, that chart is so stark to me when I, when I saw it, it, it just kind of stunned me because, you know, I've been hearing my colleagues, Councilwoman Johnson, talking about, you know, housing as a commodity. I've also been hearing Mayor Protem and Councilman Williams talking about raising the levels of income. And then you hear on top of that, if you raise the level of incomes, they may actually lose the housing that they already have. So these, this is why I think these conversations are so important that we, you know, you can, you hear people talking about them, but there is the data. That's what it says in that chart. All of those things at one time. So I, I thank you all for pulling that together and I hope that the citizens and residents of Durham are watching along with us to, so that they can understand the kinds of things that we are faced with as a community and how we struggle to make sense of all of this madness that I think. It just, it, it just always amazes me that in the greatest country in the whole world that we can't house our people. That, that's the sad part. Where they do that at? Where you can't hire their people in the greatest country in the whole world?
Thank you, Councilmember Williams, and then Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. I, this is probably one of the greatest moments of this council, because we're finally getting to some core, some core things here. And I probably jacked this up when we did our first dive. This is the point I was trying to make when I was talking about how do we get more people economically empowered? And, and I didn't really know how to put all of that into a, you know, a, a tagline or whatever, but this, this is the issue I'm running into. You know, this is, this is the issue I take with the public government and public housing as a policy. We have created this space and now we've entrapped people because if they do make $1 more, one penny, they're out in the wilderness. You know, so I, I made up this whole term, I call it a gaps benefits fund. I don't know how we can create that. But, you know, the scary thing is even if we do provide support, once this is recorded, then they, they lose what little bit they have. You know? So we incentivize being poor as a, as a, as a federal government and that's problematic. So I don't know how we're going to be able to help with this at the local level, maybe in the form of resources not being money in pocket to protect them, but resources provided in regards to wraparound. You know, to help folks get up, you know, get out of a, you know, economically impoverished situation to an economically empowered situation. You know, so hopefully, hopefully we can, we can continue this conversation and, and get to that, but this, this is eye-opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say one more thing about the, the income conversation, which we have a lot and it is important, and I think a lot of the points are valid in that if people, and people have more money, they can afford better housing, but the problem is that the cost of housing continues to outpace income growth. People can't keep up. And there are cities in this country where the area median income is $150,000 and people making $100,000 or $120,000 are eligible for affordable housing because as incomes rise, so does the cost of living, so does rent, you know, so does, so does the cost of housing. So I think that the policies that we are pursuing of building subsidized affordable housing, that's, that with its long-term affordability guaranteed and pegged to AMI is, is the right strategy because as AMI goes up, those folks are still going to be, are still going to be eligible for housing as long as their income isn't outpacing AMI growth, which in most cases, you know, is probably not going to be. Most of the, most of the growth in our AMI, we're probably going to be seeing at the higher levels, right? But there, like be, because, you know, eight, the area median income is like, that's the median, right? Like that's right down the middle. We're not moving, as people move up, that also shifts. So giving people more income while, you know, an important, an important part of dealing with this problem is never going to be enough. We still, there are always going to be people who, just, just by the definition, there are always going to be people at less than 30% of AMI. There are always going to be people at less than 50% of AMI and those people are always going to need support in order to be able to afford housing on the private market. And that's why we need to, as the, as the city government, as the state and federal government can be investing in, in these housing programs and making sure that, because the private market is, the private market is never going to provide housing for people at these incomes, no matter how high these incomes get, because they are always going to be targeting people with the ability to pay as much as possible in order to maximize their profits. So, so the, the government, the city government, the federal government is always going to have to have a role in housing. Increasing incomes is not the way out. Providing enough housing for everybody is the way out. Unfortunately, we can't do that at the local level, it's, it's, the scope is too big. But I think when we think about, when we think about policy, like that's the goal we should be looking for. When we think about the federal policies and the state policies that we want to support, we need to keep building affordable housing, we need to keep making sure, making it possible for, we, we need to, we need to continue investing in this space. It's not just, it's not just get everybody a training program, they'll get a job and they'll be able to afford a house. There will always be people who can't. And so we need to keep, we need to continue investing and continue encouraging the governments above us to invest at the levels that are needed to actually make a housing guarantee a reality.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you so much. And, and Councilmember Johnson, you know, did, yeah, amen to everything you said and I don't, I don't think, I hope no one is suggesting that we stop doing those things. You know, but when we look at the numbers, some people are breaking through and, and the outcomes are highly racialized. There's a reason why there's more white ownership than black ownership. It's not because black folk are lazy or white people are smarter or that they work harder than us, even at levels that are not, you know, ultra wealthy. There's a reason why that ownership outpaces us and the outcomes are so racialized. And there are people, you know, there's a, there's a saying in my faith tradition that says, "The poorer you will have with you always." And, and we know that. So we, we need, I think it's our moral obligation, you know, that line in our preamble that says, "Provide, promote the general welfare," I think means something in our constitution. And so, yeah, you know, before, you know, I got elected, I, I pushed for the municipal government to use our own land to build affordable housing and I'll never stop calling for that. But I think what we're saying is while we're doing that, we need to recognize that some people have broken through. There, there are, are black, single mothers in this city who have a story where they were on public assistance and, and they broke through. They went to school at night and now they own homes. We need to create an environment where more of those stories can happen while we're still fulfilling our moral obligation of building affordable housing. can happen while we're still fulfilling our moral obligation of building affordable housing. So it's not, as I often say, it's not either or, it's this and that. Put everything on the table. But in Durham, we've, we've spent a lot of time talking about building up the supply without talking enough, how do you get your house? You started off poor, I started off poor. How do you get your house, and I'm still renting? What what systems come into play? What what interventions can we bring to play that will do away with some of these racialized outcomes, where, where, you know, white folk who are just as educated or not educated as some black folk are managing to break through, and and others are not? And that's what we're talking about. I think we're talking about either and, there's no refute to anything you've said, Councilmember Johnson. It's all right. I think we've got a track record of doing those things, particularly as Durham. We should be proud in Durham. We need to continue doing those things. But we also have to have the other conversation that's uncomfortable sometimes, but we need to have it. How do we get more money in our people's pockets while we're doing those things that are necessary as a government in building up housing stock and affordable housing? It's it's both and, not either or. Councilmember Caballero.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, I have a few questions. I just was waiting to the end. So one thing I was noticing, you know, and this is something that's come up very often, is the the difference between Orange County and Durham County, even though we're all kind of lumped together. I'm assuming, and I just want a correction, that 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 gap is slowly narrowing, that the income in Durham, the household income in Durham is slowly, over time, going up because of some of the folks who are moving here that are shifting that. But I just wanted to know.
That is correct. And that's what I was saying earlier about the changes in AMI. For our, for Durham's AMI, I can't speak to for Orange, because I'm not familiar, but for ours, we know whose, that people are moving here in big numbers and where they're going, and on average, what their incomes are, and that's what's driving. It's not because people who are already here are working in the service industry, for example, which is growing, but it's not, their incomes are not necessarily increasing. But for some reason, and the reason is, people are coming in, they're coming in with incomes, and I think you all talked about that with Dr. Johnson in your retreat, he brought that information for Durham.
Thank you. And then a couple other questions. If I am housing, and this is more just for resident benefit, because I think there's lots of residents who are confused about where do I go if I'm housing insecure or I'm facing housing issues? I'm a person who is facing housing insecurity. Obviously, I'm not showing up at Community Development. Where am I going? You know, if I'm a resident and I need that, where do I go? What number do I call? Where do I show up?
So there's two places that that you can call. One is Housing for New Hope, who serves as our intake coordinator and agency. All right. I just don't have the number with me right now, but I can get that to you. You can also call Community Development, 919-560-4750, we can give you the number. You give that number, so I can give that number outright.
Thank you. If I am a resident who is showing up at a DSS office, right, you know, Department of Social Services, they handle all kinds of things. What is going to be the interaction with DSS and the city if I show up and I'm like, I need, I'm housing insecure, I'm food insecure, I need healthcare?
So the the county, which of course, I can't speak for the county, but I do know, because we have some interaction with them, they do have funds that they have set aside with criteria, of course, for persons to get assistance if they need energy assistance or housing assistance. Of course, it's not unlimited.
And then, obviously, there's also Entry Point, right?
Yes.
Which is our coordinated number. And then if I am a non-English speaker, what would be my process?
So you can call both of those numbers, Call Housing for New Hope and Entry Point, because they have a system in place to work with those who speak another language.
Thank you. I really, I just wanted that out. We hear that often. I get that a lot, specifically, especially from Spanish speakers. We have seen an increase, you know, I spent a fair amount of time in the court last winter, when we were going through phases of of rental assistance. And we know that there is, there are a lot of Latino, Latinx residents who are facing, I think they've faced housing insecurity for a long time, but COVID has impacted my community very, very deeply, and not having the services or not really knowing where to go. And so I just really wanted to make sure that we had that stated very clearly here. I wanted to share a brief story about my own housing journey in Durham, which is pretty odd. So when we first moved to Durham, the reason we moved here, we were in Chicago, is because my husband lost his job. And so we actually were housing insecure. We left the city of Chicago and moved in with my father and lived there, and then eventually ended up in this area, because my husband was able to get a job. The job that he was able to get, at that time, it was the Great Recession. I think architects had a 50% unemployment rate at that moment, 50%. These are highly trained, you know, you have to get a master's to be a licensed architect in the United States. And when we first came to Durham, the job that was available to us, we were in that 30% AMI. That is not where we are now. It's one of the reasons that I am proud to serve this city, is because it was an opportunity that the city was able to, you know, when we landed here, we were actually, in a way, taken care of. We would not be able to buy in Durham now. And I think that most of the folks on this dais would not be able to buy in Durham now. I think almost every single one of us have had the privilege and benefit of a college education, if not higher. We have a, we literally have a doctor on the dais right now. We have a former judge and a former college dean on the dais right now. We are, in many ways, some of the most privileged people in the city of Durham, and yet none of us could probably afford housing if we had to buy today. And I think that speaks to the problem of, it is income, but it is also housing supply, and it also market and economic trends that are going to deeply keep, it's coming, it's going to get worse if we don't respond in a very, very aggressive way. Some of it is beyond our control. I think to Mayor Protem's point around, you know, why is it that white folks are able to do this thing? Almost every single white person I know got their down payment from their parents. They weren't able to buy a house either, but they had intergenerational wealth. And often, if you look at their intergenerational wealth, you can literally tie it back to the New Deal. You can tie it back to a massive federal program that lifted up some folks, but didn't lift up all folks. And until we, as a country, can come together and do the same thing for everyone, we are going to keep seeing this problem. At the municipal level, I am super proud of the work that Durham has done in this area. I think we have a lot more to do, but I know that everyone on this dais is committed. I know all staff is committed to this. But at a certain point, it has to be from powers that have infinitely more resources than we do. And it is going to be our job to keep challenging our peers and our colleagues at the state and federal level. We need more. We know our investment, those investment companies are wreaking havoc in the Durham market right now. And so to the mayor's point around the hard decisions that we face, these are the hard decisions that we face, because we will never have the the local resources to really meet the need. But we do have it at the federal level, and we've done it before, and we need to do it again. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, a quick question. Could you remind me who determines the AMI region?
U.S. Census is my understanding, U.S. Census Bureau. Remember that we were, you may, may not be aware, but we were part of the, with Raleigh and Wake County, and it was the, basically, the triangle. And then there, you know, I'd be glad to get some information and and share it in terms of that level of detail. But then the metropolitan area was divided up, mainly because Raleigh became, it met some thresholds by itself. And so the decision was made at the federal level to break Raleigh and Wake County all away from Durham and Orange County. And so Durham and Orange County, right now, we're, we're to ourselves. And Wake County sits by itself as a metropolitan area. There's some definitions around that.
Thank you. Mayor, I hope that we will continue this conversation. And I, you know, ask my colleagues that we consider this, you know, just keep the both and in our minds when it comes to housing, when it comes to building, and when it comes to economic empowerment. You know, as I've said before, every action and inaction has a solution. And we we have enough knees on our neck in this situation, enough, so we don't need to do it to ourselves. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Do any other colleagues have questions or comments?
I just want to say that I just thank my colleagues, too, for this conversation and this deep dive, because I'm hearing more and more people, good people, people that want to stay here, moving out of Durham. And that's disheartening to me, because they can't afford to buy here, or they can't afford to rent here. And so I'm glad that we're continuing to talk about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor O'Neil. I'm passing it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Caballero, and thank you to all of our colleagues. And thank you to Director Johnson for this very sobering presentation this afternoon. I hope that the general public also notice that we're changing up a little bit on how we are conducting our meetings. I hope that my colleagues enjoy taking part of it, so it allows me the opportunity to kind of sit back and get into the meat of things. So I appreciate all of your help. We'll be asking your comments about that today, as soon as we're done. We now move to our next order of business.